Fifteen seconds.
With the state, the government, anything we can do.
To be honest with you, Mary.
I asked that question at county level.
And Dan and I have talked about it.
And even though the state's getting all this money for infrastructure from the Second Cares Act. Completing that sound wall is not, does not seem to be a priority at the county level or at the state level. I think Dan will tell you that as well. The use of those funds seem to be going in other places because I've asked. And Dan and I know that they haven't even completed engineering on the managed lane project. And Dan, I'll let you expound on that a little bit.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Marques. It's probably about four or five years ago, we were, the city of Darien along with other municipalities were involved with, I'll call them open houses with the Illinois Department of Transportation engineers that were working on preliminary engineering. Part of that was all to decide whether or not there was going to be managed lanes. By managed lanes, there was an opportunity for private businesses to basically buy into this so they would be able to fund what will be referred to as a managed lane or in simple terms, a tollway. Obviously, none of that has come to fruition. There's been lots of discussion. There's been lots of planning. I can tell you that basically the entire corridor of the city of Darien is eligible for a sound wall based on the study and those studies referred, is referred to as the receptors. There is an IGA in place, or I should say there is an agenda memo, whether it was an IGA or not, I can't recall. But when and if the Illinois Department of Transportation reconstructs, and I say reconstruct, side fifty-five in any shape or form, that the sound wall would then be considered. At this point, I can tell you, it's not in any engineering plans. It's not in any future plans, in other words. So the engineering plans are the first and foremost. Without those, there's no construction opportunities. So I can tell you, we're probably at least a minimal of two to five years away from any type of engineering because I have not, I've been following their website, following with follow-ups, but there's been no, no discussion. In regards to the Frontage Road, as you know, we've been working with the county on a study. More or less, I've been working with them in regards to the Cass Avenue Corridor Study, in regards to a lot of the rhetoric that has been going on recently. And my thought process was, once the study is implemented and approved and moving forward, that the Illinois Department of Transportation and the county consultant look at that curve for any possible opportunity. So again, I just segued it to something else, but I just wanted to mention that because, you know, while the city of Darien tries to stay very active with the problems, ongoing problems with the fencing around the curve, it's really a moot issue because it appears that we, the city of Darien, cannot do anything to help, you know, to make I-Dots do some, some more significant improvements. They're doing some. Again, is that enough? That's to be seen. So that's kind of where I'll leave it at. Thank you.
Mary, I talked to Senator Curran. Because, and Dan is aware of this, what they're really looking for is what they call a PPP. A public-private proposal. And in order to have. The establishment of a PPP. And Senator Curran doesn't see that happening because there are municipalities. Making money off of that. And so that's part of this issue with the managed lane project. If the state passed the law saying that PPPs could be established, that would actually move that proposal forward a bit. Go ahead, Mary. I know you had something else.
Oh, it's okay. Yeah. And I had reached out to Senator Curran too, just about the, because I know Chris Snow had talked to him at the mayor's breakfast back in the fall when you and Willa Brooke, you know, we got together. So, yeah, I just wanted to like follow back up with him and I thank Dan very much. He's always super responsive. And I know with this Cass Avenue Corridor Study, I'm hopeful that, you know, some things will, besides, you know, North Frontage Road, obviously things along Cass and other areas will come to light. Do we know of a timeframe, like of the study, the length of the study and when their, you know, promising results and possible actions?
I would say based on what I know in regards to these types of studies, they're going to take a minimal of a year, if not a year and a half at a maximum. And obviously, once that's developed, you're looking at the implementation of those, of that study, which could additionally take an additional year to two years in regards to engineering and planning.
We're looking at possibly three, three years plus, maybe three to four years before we would really see something.
Well, first steps in motion. Thank you.
Anything else? Under communications. Eric?
Yeah, I've got three items here. The first is probably a question for the chief is I got a question from a resident about when to call nine, the nine-one-one number and when to call the direct line to the police department. And if you can clarify that a little bit for us.
I sure can. You can always call the nine-one-one line. And when you call nine-one-one, you are going to get DUCOM. And then DUCOM is going to dispatch a car or may send that message to a sergeant and the sergeant will call that person back. But for the most part, if you want police to respond to a scene, you should call the nine-one-one number. If you want to discuss some topic with an officer, you can use that ten-digit dial. If you use that ten-digit dial during the day, eight to five, Monday through Friday, it's going to ring at the police department. That same number on off-hours and on weekends is going to ring at DUCOM and DUCOM will notify us that there's a person to be talked to.
Okay. And the second communication I had was I did get a very unhappy call from a resident expressing concern over the cost of the garbage contract. And they just indicate they didn't do, they don't do enough. They only use one sticker and it's going to cost them more money than, than it should and that they are not going to sign up for it and they are going to refuse, refuse payment when the time comes. And the third one is, and I've, I've had conversations following back up with her. I've calmed her down a little bit. We'll see how that goes. The third one I have is that I have been having communications with various residents on Nextdoor since I posted a request on Nextdoor for residents to indicate specific businesses that they would like to see to come to Darien. And there was a huge response in that, probably a lot of people did see. But I have had quite a few communications with some of the prospective leads and, and businesses that companies would like to see. I have passed those on to Dan and I've always passed them on to Mid-America. And Mid-America now are the current brokers for Chestnut Court. They just took over a couple of months ago. But I passed it on to them for them to follow up on. You know, and, and the thing is, I'm trying to get in, I mean, it's, it's really critical now for us to take a very active role in trying to attract and retain businesses in Darien. And if people saw that we did lose exports now to Downers Grove, this kitty corner across the street. And I tell you, if you want to get depressed, take a drive across through that mall over there. It's about eighty-five percent empty right now. And it just scares the heck out of me right now that they're going to continue to come over to Darien and try to steal businesses away. Now, I, I was really hoping that the Economic Development Committee would be a little bit more proactive in attracting businesses. But in order to raise the bar, I prepared a job description. I sent this off to Brian for a new position, for either a new position or a contractor that would be in charge of retail business attraction and development specialist. But I'm going to discuss that more at the budget meetings. But I've been working also with Dan and I, I on attracting marijuana retailers and growers into Darien. You know, it's, right now it's caught up issuing additional retail licenses. It's caught up in the legal system right now. But it's anticipated the second half of this year, the state will start issuing licenses again. And I don't know if anybody saw the article recently that Naperville does have three marijuana dispensaries right now and they're making over one point seven million dollars. And they're now in the process of changing their code to allow for a fourth one. They were restricted to only three. They're now going to be adding a fourth location if they get their way. So, you know, this whole, this whole thing of filling of retail space is going to be extremely, is extremely competitive right now. I mean, Downers Grove is going to get, I mean, they've put a lot of money into rehabbing the center on the northwest corner of Seventy-Fifth and LaMonte. And they're going to continue to try to steal businesses away. And I think we're, we're just going to have to get real, real competitive. And I'm hoping we can, in the budgeting process, we can talk about this new position that would also be able to help us a little bit.
Well, first of all, Eric, that center has been remodeled for almost two years. And if you drive through that center, that center is about eighty-five percent empty.
I drove that last week.
So they're not doing a very good job attracting businesses from Darien.
Well, they just took export away, so I'm giving a credit for doing so.
I understand that. But I have good news in telling you that we received building plans from Mr. Fontana for Fry the Coop, which is the old Steak and Shake. And we'll be starting that process. Jordan has begun that process examining their building plans. And contrary to what we heard about a month or so ago, that Carla's, that the Brookhaven Shopping Center was closed. Carla's is actually open and operating. I went in there the other day and bought a hot dog and some Italian ice. So they were, they were closed for like a vacation. But a lot of people were on Next, went on Nextdoor and said that they were closed. The city lost the business by not publicizing the business. Well, none of that was true. Carla's is open again. And again, we will ask them again to come before City Council and introduce themselves because we asked them to do that before. And they have not done that. So it's not through our efforts that we haven't tried to publicize that business. So that, that is, that is the good news.
Yeah. And I think too on Direct Connect, I mean, I get people indicating, I talked to Brian a little bit about this, about promoting some Darien businesses on Direct Connect each time that goes out.
And we do that. We, we had an article in there about Wayback Burgers.
Yeah, I saw that one.
A couple of weeks ago. Anything else from anybody else? Mary?
Just as the liaison, the council liaison to the Economic Development Committee, I just want to explain a little bit about, you know, obviously it's only been around for a couple of years and the committee did do a tremendous job during COVID when, you know, a lot of the council committees weren't meeting and they really shifted gears from their initial plan to help sustain Darien businesses and do a major reach out to all the existing businesses. And, and truly worked with the mayor and it was extraordinary in getting those businesses the support they needed and getting them to stay. So that's just something, you know, I did want to highlight. The Economic Development Committee meets on the first Thursday of the month at seven PM. That is a meeting open to the public, open to any other alderperson to attend. And I, I welcome those, those meetings, people coming and people, you know, participating in the audience and, and being active and sharing ideas. As, as you guys are all aware, we participated in a workshop on October twenty-third with the new chairperson, Brian Gay, who brings a wealth of information and knowledge to the committee. And there's plans underway. In our December meeting, we started to evaluate, you know, open areas and potential development areas in the, in the city of Darien. So work is definitely underway. Plans are being put together. You know, forging ahead to, you know, better work with the city and, you know, further enhance economic development.
Well, the comments I've been getting is that all they seem, that constantly those meetings are being canceled. So people have tried to go to the meetings. It's been like the last six out of eight or something, somebody said.
Eric, be real, be real careful who you're getting that information from.
I understand, but I even tried to go sometimes. Now, is the one on February fourth going to be canceled or is that on?
It's on, Eric. And, and most of the city council, the city council meeting, the first week in January was canceled, as was economic development. And the December meeting happened. I was there. I didn't see you attend that. And, and in terms of if you're taking attendance of what the meetings that were canceled, the majority of the meetings that you're noting that were canceled happened over COVID when all council committees were canceled, like municipal services and the police committees. But by far, the majority of the meetings, even just since the summer, have taken place.
There's a lot of people that want.
Well, if you'd like to, Eric, put those, a lot of people in touch with me as the liaison and I'd be happy to talk to them.
I, I've been encouraging, I've been encouraging the people to show up to the meeting.
Please do so because those meetings are, are taking place and it's open to the public. And we never get, the mayor attends almost all the time. And we're very lucky. Jordan is our staff liaison and does a phenomenal job. And just like any committee meeting, like planning and zoning, if you don't have a quorum, and that happens sometimes, but, you know, that's a rarity. But the next meeting is scheduled to take place February fourth and I hope to see you there.
Hey, Dan or Mary or Joe, when we see a business like Export leaving, going someplace else, do we ever reach out to find out what the reasons why they chose a new location? Do we have any system in place for that? Call it an exit interview?
With Export, we've, what we heard was that the facility was rundown. Management had let it deteriorate. Residents who went to, went to Export, it said it was dirty. It wasn't clean. And in fact, one of, one of my very good friends who went there, who's been going there for years, made the comment. She pointed out to management that the place looked terrible and they told her, well, don't worry about it. We're moving to Downers Grove. And that's the first I heard about it. Dan?
Yes, just to expound a little more, you know, somewhat behind the scenes, we've been working with Export probably over the last five years. And they were going to put on addition. They were going to, you know, obviously buy the China, the previous China buffet that was part of their expansion process. So while we've been working with them, obviously nothing ever came to fruition. So again, I just wanted to share that with the council that, you know, when we do have opportunities to be able to expand out of business, we go after it very aggressively. And, and again, you know, it's something that their management had looked at and said, well, you know what? We're going to go somewhere else. And unfortunately, you know, there's not much more that we could do at that point.
Because there's something, from a business stand, from a business owner's standpoint, there is something to be said about having a Downers Grove address. Because you ask anybody else, you know, a lot of times somebody asks, where's Darien? And what do we always tell them? It's right next to Downers Grove. And the same thing applies there. So it's not that Darien's doing a bad job in economic development. You just, you just can't compete sometimes with certain, with certain aspects. A bad building owner, a bad, you know, or, or an address, no desire. So. This is my thought on that.
And that property, the China place, buffet place, is actually getting a lot of interest from some of the companies I'm talking to because a lot of the restaurants, they need that second generation restaurant. So they're looking for something that was a restaurant before. So I hate to see it taken over by a retailer when we could get a restaurant in that space.
Mary?
And yeah, just lastly, you know, we talked about the strip mall management company or, you know, the owners of the property. And that is something that Economic Development Committee has talked about and plans to do down the road or in the near future is to meet with the management companies of the strip malls and talk with them. Because obviously, you know, they're the ones that are, you know, the clearinghouse for the businesses. And, you know, we need to have that relationship with them to seek out what, you know, why, if there are vacancies. Because obviously not all strip malls in the Darien area have vacancies. Chestnut Court clearly is, you know, the one with the majority of them.
Yeah. And Dan and I, you know, are later this month are meeting with Mid-America. So maybe, Mary, we can, one of the people from your committee could then also meet with us because we're having them come down to the city of Darien and have a chat with us, meet some of the people at the city, city hall and stuff, and then go over to the property and look around Chestnut Court.
That would be fantastic. Thank you, Eric.
Because there, there seem to be, you know, they're just, they've only had it for a couple of months and they've, they're getting, they're trying to get as aggressive as they can. So Dan and I are just going to keep them on their toes.
Well, that's encouraging. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we're going to move on to the mayor's report. First item under the mayor's report is consideration of a motion to approve the reappointments of Robert Erickson, Brian Litsky and Ralph Stompanato to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kennedy, seconded by Alderman Shower. Discussion? On the roll?
Penny?
Penny?
Hi.
Shower?
Shower?
Hi.
Vaughn?
Lester?
Do you hear me or not?
Vaughn?
Yeah, we heard you.
Yeah, we heard you too.
Ted.
Ted.
Lester, we're waiting for you.
Hi, I can hear you. Hi.
Sullivan? Sullivan?
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Gustafson?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Uh, those appointments have been approved. I'm happy to announce that we have a nomination that's going to be read to us tonight for a Citizen of the Year. Our committee's been busy accepting applications. Bonnie Caceres and her team have sent Mary, uh, the letter which details the background of the nominee. So Mary, I'm going to let you read that letter for the group.
Thank you, Mayor Marques. Um, it is my honor to read the letter as presented to me by the Citizen of the Year Committee, the nomination of the 2022 Citizen of the Year. A quote from the Dalai Lama reads, "There are only two days in the year that nothing can be done about. One is called yesterday and the other is called tomorrow. So today is the right day to love, believe, and do, and mostly live." As the 2022 Citizen of the Year Committee read several submitted nominations for our candidate, this proverb radiates the feelings of the committee. What a marvelous person who lives to give so many, give so much to so many organizations, church activities, community functions, and business leadership, and indeed enjoys life and continues for such a long period of time. It was a unanimous choice. Therefore, it is the great pride that the 2022 Citizen of the Year Committee submits to the City of Darien Council the name of Lou Mallers as our choice for the 2022 Citizen of the Year. I am very proud to read this letter. Due to COVID restrictions, our notification this year was done over the phone rather than the typical publisher's clearinghouse sweepstakes fashion. When asked the question, "Will you accept the 2022 Citizen of the Year nomination?" He said, "Wait, what? Say that again? Are you sure?" About five times. What a humble human being he is, and we all know that firsthand. Let's start from the beginning, even before Lou was known to Darien. Lou honorably served as an Army reservist. He and his wife Carol and their son Jeff moved to Darien in 1989. They are proud grandparents of Kendall and Helen. Jeff and his wife Carmen are raising their family in Bowling Brook. Lou has been watching over all homeowners his entire career, working in the financial sector of a mortgage and banking. He is a member of the Illinois Mortgage Bank Association and has proudly served to the elected position of President of his organization. He has previously served on the Advisory Board of the Illinois Housing Development Authority and Roosevelt University's Marshall Bennett Institute of Real Estate. He volunteered from 1999 to 2000 for Chicago's Habitat for Humanity. He is currently Vice President of Business Development at Compass Mortgage. Lou was sponsored for Lion's Club membership by the lion, L. Barovia. He became a member of the club in 1990. In these past 30-plus years, he has served on a variety of committees that have positively, positively impacted our community. From the Fourth of July Parade, Darian Fest, Children's Halloween Party, Christmas Toy and Meal Delivery, and Annual Candy Drive, Lou could be counted on to help plan, show up, and share some of his time to bring people together in the spirit of giving. He has also assisted with the Lion's Club Foundation Flag Program. He has chaired the annual golf outing and the very popular Lion's Club Breakfast, Pancake Breakfast, making sure no one goes home hungry. Lou has served on the Lion's Board as Committee Liaison. He most recently participated in the Darian Remembrance of 9/11 to honor our veterans and service personnel. Whenever Lou is asked, he cheerfully steps up to make sure things happen. A nominator's note spoke of Lou. His smile and style makes you want to be on his service team and do more for your community. For the past 10 years, Lou has served on the Our Lady of Mount Carmel Parish Council as the Service Commissioner. He also is head usher for 10 AM Mass on Sunday. Lou is also responsible for the St. Vincent de Paul Clothing Drive, Holiday Food and Toy Collection, Food Pantry, and PAS, which is Public Action to Deliver Shelter. For these events, Lou coordinates volunteers to carry out tasks. However, he is especially very passionate about the St. Vincent de Paul Clothing Drive. This drive involves a truck stationed at the church parking lot where contributions are dropped off during specified hours. Lou has been known to show up at all hours to check on the items left outside the truck because he doesn't want any donations misplaced or damaged or impacted by inclement weather. He is also instrumental in setting up the nativity scene in front of the church, which is the nativity scene from the movie Home Alone, in case you didn't know. That's my aside. For the past 15 years, Lou has been president of the Pinehurst Homeowners Association, helping to develop a sense of community. A recent example of Lou's ongoing spirit of helping other people is what happened on June 20th, 2021, when a tornado ripped through the Pinehurst neighborhood. It resembled a war zone and Lou lost no time in mobilizing the troops and got started on the cleanup of the subdivision. It is typical of Lou's kind nature that he offered much encouragement throughout the relief efforts and spoke so proudly of neighbors, helping neighbors during this tough time. A quote from Shannon A. Alder, "One of the most important things you can do on this earth is to let people know that you are not alone." In addition to these commitments, Lou also volunteers for the city of Darien in two capacities. He was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2012 by the mayor at that time, Kathy Weaver, and chairs this committee today. When Mayor Joseph Marques took office, he established Darien's new Economic Development Committee and appointed Lou as a committee member. In 2016, Lou was appointed to serve on School District 86's Citizen Referendum Advisory Committee. Nominator's statement, "When I reflect on all the incredible individuals whose portraits grace the Citizen of the Year recognition wall at City Hall, I believe Lou Mallers is another standout who deserves recognition. His longtime and continued dedication to our community is stellar. He is a natural leader that captivates the essence of community service. No matter where you turn, there is Lou rolling up his sleeves, working hard to better our community. In his free time, Lou likes to golf and go on walks with Carol, his beloved wife. They enjoy their time at their home in Galena. They best, the best time for both of them though is traveling here and far, cheering on their granddaughter Kendall at her school and club swim meets and grandson Helen at his club hockey games." Quote from Leo Christopher, "There's only one thing more precious than our time. It's that the time how we spend it with one another." A nominator states, "A shining star is something that we will all need in our lives. A star can guide us to the place we need to be, a place where we can discover our gifts and how we can use thoughts, those gifts to better serve, to better ourselves and make the world a little better for others." Lou Mallers is the shining star in our community. From his Lion's Club activities, city council commitments, neighborhood association, and the parish board duties, he has shared his time and talent to make Darien a nice place to live. Indeed, Lou is and will continue to be on the, one of the many shiny stars in Darien, making Darien a nice place to live. By city ordinance, our guidelines for selecting the Citizen of the Year are diversity of activities, length of service, degree of involvement in the community, and impact to the city. Lou certainly satisfies all these categories and then some. City Council, we present to you Lou Mallers, our choice for the Darien 2022 Citizen of the Year."
My ball!
I believe we need a motion.
We need a motion?
In a second.
In a second?
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Mary, I couldn't have thought of a veteran individual than Lou Mallers. Lou has been a, a dear friend of mine for many, many, many years.
In fact, when his granddaughter was born, my grandson were born, we committed them to marry each other someday.
With Lou, Lou doing the dowry, since he's Greek and I'm Italian, and we kid each other about that.
Wonderful choice by the committee.
Bonnie, I know you're out there watching.
And Carol.
And Linda.
And Linda.
And Jerry.
And Jimmy.
And Jimmy.
And I think we made a wonderful choice.
He truly is a great guy.
Always has a smile on his face.
And he's always willing.
To work.
To work. I mean, he, I don't know where the man gets his energy all the time. But a truly a great candidate. Thank you very much to the committee. Mary?
Um, and I just, I was elated when, um, you know, they're very private and secretive and as they should be, they keep it, they did get, um, um, a lot of nominations this year, which is wonderful. We have so many outstanding, deserving citizens. But, um, I was, my heart burst with joy when I opened the document and saw the name Lou Mallers. Um, I cannot think of a more deserving individual. And, um, in addition to that, I do want to point out a couple of dates. Um, there will be a congratulatory reception following the city council meeting, which is actually on Tuesday, February 22nd, since the Monday is President's Day. This will happen at the police training room, just so we can more socially distance, um, following city council on Tuesday, February 22nd. And then the Citizen of the Year banquet and celebration will be held on Friday, March 4th. Um, cocktails at 6:00 PM, dinner at 7:00 PM at Alpine Banquets. The cost is $49 per person, family-style dinner, open bar, all-inclusive. Reservations will start being taken, um, on January 31st. Um, and that will be, you can contact Diane Novarini at City Hall by phone or in person, um, and checks are made out to the city of Darien. And the deadline for registering for the banquet is February 23rd, Wednesday. Um, I hope to see, um, all city councilmen in attendance and committee members. And, um, it'll be a great night celebrating an incredible man.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary. Just a couple of other things underneath the mayor's report. On Saturday, January the Darien Community Action Group met for the first time in our police training room. This is a, this is a movement started by the Darien Rotary to bring all organizations together, uh, for the sake of coming up with a project or programs that they could utilize to assist the city. Uh, the purpose of the meeting again was to bring all civic service and social groups together. We had 25 different organizations there that day. And I'm really happy to say that one of the first things that came out of that was the idea of developing a dynamic electronic community calendar. Uh, Mary Sullivan has taken on that responsibility with Lana Johnson, and we'll be seeing that work start soon. Uh, our next meeting is going to be at the Elnie Prairie Library, uh, on the 12th of February. Uh, in addition to that, um, we, we, we have something up her on January 1st at 4:59 AM. Uh, we want to welcome Archer Maxwell Wilkerson to our Darien family. Archer was officially, officially became a Darien resident on January 1st at 4:59 AM. Uh, best wishes to his parents, Kelly and Jason Wilkerson, I guess. He was one of the first cabinet board in DuPage County, uh, in 2022. So many congratulations to them. And, uh, that's all I have at this point. We'll move on to the city clerk's report. Joanne?
No report.
No report. Thank you.
City administration report.
No report, mayor, thank you.
Department head information questions. Any questions for Police Chief, uh, Thomas or Municipal Services Director, Mr. Gobek? I think you asked some of them in the course of the meeting already. Anything that you did not ask? Greg or Dan, any reports you would like to provide?
You're on mute, Dan. Not at this time, mayor. Thank you.
Chief Thomas? Okay, no report. All right, that takes us to the treasurer's report. And we have two warrants tonight. Warrant number 212217. Uh, we have, uh, under the, the funds listed, uh, subtotal $44,996. And payroll of $276,356.70 for a total to be approved by the city council of $321,266.46. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Any questions? If none, the roll?
Belzak?
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Can't hear.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Kenny?
Aye.
Schauer?
Schauer?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The warrant's been approved. We have a second warrant, warrant number 212218. Uh, our total for the listed funds is $840,534.69. Payroll of $278,9173. Our total to be approved by the city council of $1,119,446.42. Motion to approve. Alderman Schauer, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Questions or comments? If none, the roll?
Schauer?
Schauer?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Kenny?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
The warrant's been approved. We move to standing committee reports. Any of the Alderman standing committee reports? Any of the chairman?
Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the police committee meeting was canceled this evening due to lack of agenda items. Our next scheduled meeting is to be held on Tuesday, February 22nd, 6:00 PM across the street in the police training room.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Mary? Mary?
Um, the, um, next, um, Finance and Administrative Committee will be held on, um, February 7th at 6:00 PM in the, um, conference room at City Hall. The next Economic Development Committee meeting will be on February 3rd at 7:00 PM in council chambers. And then the budget workshops will start, um, on February 23rd in council chambers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, municipal services meeting is currently scheduled for next Monday at 7:00 PM in, um, council chambers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to questions and comments, agenda related. I don't believe we have. Anybody going to make comments regarding the agenda?
Moves to old business.
We have none. Therefore, we go to the consent agenda. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve ordinance.
Approving a variation.
The Darien zoning ordinance, PZC 201-5, for 1645 Walden Lane. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance.
Approving variations from the Darien city ordinance.
PZC 201-6, for 1813 Howdy Lane. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution.
To execute a contract with Eternally Green Lawn Care Incorporated.
For six various fertilizer applications.
And three application for planting beds.
And weed control.
Within the RIP.
Wrap areas and tree fertilization.
For 75th Street and an amount not to exceed $28,629 for the 2022 landscape fertilization services. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract for the 2022 landscape maintenance services between the city of Darien and Lakewood Paving Company LLC in an amount not to exceed $39,629.3. Item E, consideration of a motion to approve, uh, motion.
Motion to approve a motion authorizing a contingency with Lakewood Paving Company LLC in the amount of $20,000 for replacement of plant materials and plant enhancements for the 2022 landscape maintenance services. for the 2022 Landscape Maintenance Services. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Zeebell Water Service Products Incorporated for waterless pacer fire hydrant repair parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2023. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the county of DuPage for meter reading, billing, and transition to the automated meter reading AMR technology. Item H, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving for the citywide meter and remote replacement program contract with Core and Main Census for the purchase of water meters, remote readers, meter appurtenances, and installation in the amount not to exceed $2,950,000. Item I, consideration of motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the 2022 Concrete Sidewalk Apron Curve and gutter removal and replacement program with Suburban Concrete Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $1,144,090 and to waive the residential $75 permit fee application for concrete work. And finally, an item that we moved from new business, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Metropolitan Alliance of Police Union, Darien Chapter Number 48, Unit B, sworn employees and the city of Darien. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower.
Shower?
And the roll?
And the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Consent agenda's been approved, takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Many of the aldermen have anything they'd like to share with, with the council? Or the audience? If none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Move by Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned at 8:21. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.